I'd like to call the April PCOSN City School Board Meeting Order. First up will be the pledge to flag and inspirational reading. Curtis?
Henley Smith will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Henley is the daughter of Reagan and Tod Smith. Her favorite subject in school is math, but also loves her STEM projects. Her hobbies include horseback riding and playing with her dogs. An interesting fact about Henley is she likes eating potato chips with ice cream. Henley is a second grader Ms. Stern's class. Ms. Stern says Henley is sweet, sensitive, and an intuitive student. She's very independent and likes to think of herself as a good problem solver and a great team player.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
And will provide the inspirational reading for this evening. Kayden will be reading The Homework Monster by Shel Silverstein. Kayden is the son of Kristen D'Lo and Christopher McCain. His favorite subjects in school are math and reading. His hobbies include riding bikes and playing with his friend. Kayden is a second grader Ms. Stern's class. Ms. Stern says Kayden is a detailed, neat, and focused student. Kayden is a good thinker and problem solver. He is fascinated with all things about the North Pole and desires to grow up and be an elf, which I believe he would be, one would make a great assistant, executive personal assistant.
The homework machine. The homework machine, oh, the homework machine, the most perfect, the most perfect contraption that's ever been seen. Just put on, just put in your homework, then drop in a dime, snap on the switch, and in ten seconds' time, your homework comes out, quick and clean as can be. Here it is, nine plus four, and the answer is three. Three, oh me, I guess it's not perfect as can be. I thought I, I thought, I thought it would be.
Next up is student presentations, and students, if you please stay for a few minutes after your presentation, we'll take a break and we'll come out there and talk to you. During tonight's presentation, students from Ms. Stern's second grade class will share STEM projects completed this year. Participating are Hunter Martin, Jenna Troutman, Henley Smith, Brady Reichert, Aiden McCain, and Marissa Woodruff.
I am somebody, I was somebody when I came. I will be a better somebody when I leave. I am powerful and I am strong. I deserve that education that I get here. I have things to do, people to impress, and places to go.
I'm gonna be reading about the first person who made the first Ferris wheel, George Washington Yale Ferris Wheel, also known as George W. Ferris. George W. Ferris came up with the Ferris wheel because they wanted a better attraction than the Eiffel Tower for the, for the Chicago World's Fair. George's ideas on how to make the Ferris wheel came from a bicycle. His uncle contest thought that it would not work, but they let him go there anyway. During construction, George faced many problems, many problems, like under the foundation was quicksand. After many months of work, it was finished, standing at eight hundred thirty-four feet circumference, rising at two hundred sixty-five feet above the ground. On June twenty-first, eighteen seventy-three, a three-day five-year ride. George moved away soon and two thousand three-sixty years to be in Detroit. All summer, visitors from around the world traveled, traveled to the Chicago's, Chicago World's Fair to ride the Ferris wheel. All you needed was fifty cents.
Hello, my name is Jenna Troutman, and I'm gonna teach you about how we built our Ferris wheel. First, we made the wheel on a wheelchair that could spin all the way around because that was one of the must-haves in our challenge. We made the circumference of the wheel out of pipe cleaner, pipe cleaners because it was too hard trying to make it out of straws. Next, then we put the axle in the middle of the wheel. Next, we made the sides that connected to the axle. The sides kind of looked like a U-shape. At the end, we put the wheel and the U-shaped base together by taping them on. That is how we built our Ferris wheel.
My name is Henley Smith, and I will teach you how me and Jenna made the Ferris wheel. Jenna and I wanted to make the wheel small so that it could turn around better. We called our Ferris wheel the Rainbow Wheel. Our Ferris wheel would be located in Japan. We made it using pipe cleaners, popsicle sticks, a plastic cup, and a lot of tape. First, we assembled the wheels. Next, we put the wheels together on the axle. Then, we made the base with popsicle sticks to stand, make, to make it stand up and spin around. Also, we put on the cup, which would be for the people to go around in on the Ferris wheel. We wanted to make sure the cup did not turn upside down, so the people running it would not fall out.
In snowboarding, my partner was Tinley, and we made our snowboarding using a rectangle piece of cardboard. And attached four washers for weights, we put two washers on the front and back of the snowboard. When, then when, then we made our snowboarder out of pipe cleaners and straws. We made it stand up by putting both feet sideways on the board. The snowboarder had to be the first to cross the finish line, standing up. We raced other teams from our class outside on the playground slide. Then, I mean, Tinley and I won the silver medal for having the fastest snowboarder that stayed standing up. I made a STEM bobsled. I cut the toilet paper roll in half. I glued two straws to the bottom, and then I, and then attached the weights, which were washers, inside the bobsled. Then we put our two bobsledders inside the tube. Then we went outside to the playground. My partner and I went to the top of the twisty slide. We did a test run first to make sure that our bobsled did not tip over. After that, we raced our bobsled down the slide for the fastest time. The bobsled that we made went the fastest, and we won, my team, and we won. My team won the gold medal for bobsledding. And that is the little bobsled.
Me and my team, the Purple Pears, played hockey STEM. We made a net out of a yard of string and some straws. We put the straws as our base and tied the string around it for the net. We made hockey sticks out of popsicle sticks that we broke in half to make the ends of our sticks. Because you only get one, got one stick to use, how you get points is that you have to hit the puck into the other team's net. If you miss or hit it through the holes, hit it through the holes of the net, you don't get a point for your team. Each person on our team got a chance to hit the puck into the other team's net. There are four rounds, and you keep playing teams until the teams finish playing each other. Then you might get a medal if you win against most of the teams that you played. Our team won the silver medal for hockey. That is how you play hockey STEM if you want to play with your friends and family.
My name is Kayden. My partner Ben and I participated in Olympic STEM challenges. Our first STEM challenge was ski jumping. Ben and I had to build skis and a person to put on the skis. We used pipe cleaners and straws for our ski person and pennies for weights. On the ski, on the skis and Valentine cards for the bottom, because on one side was slicker than the other side. We made sure to make our skier bend down forward and put his skis close together in a V shape. That is how I built our skis and ski jumper. Now I'm going to tell you how we played ski jumping. We pushed our skier off the low table in our classroom. The farthest ski jumper had to land standing up on its skis for the jump to count. The teams could win first, second, or third place. Now it was time for the competition. We won first against the other teams in our class. Then we had to compete against the winner of another second grade class winner, another second grade class that was doing STEM Olympic challenges too. It was fun, and my partner and I won against the other second grade, grade class. Also, we earned the gold medals.
My name, I made the rock that we used for the curling Olympic STEM challenge. The rock is made using tinfoil, metals, nuts, washers, or pennies as the weights. For the weights inside our curling rock, we put one washer and two pennies and put in tinfoil over it. Then we made the handle out of pipe cleaners. My team made four curling rocks to use during our curling game against another team from our class. This is how we, you play curling. Your team has four rocks, and you slide one rock on the ice, which was, which was a table in our classroom. When you slide the rock, you want it to land on the target, which is the, which is called the house. You want to slide all your rocks to land closest to the center of the house. The team with the rocks closest to the house wins the points for that round. The team with the most points wins.
We've put together some pictures of the different STEM challenges that we've done throughout the school year. So our side show is more just pictures, so if you all, as we go through, if you all wanna say anything about the challenges that we have pictured of, you can do that, but if not, you can just take a look and see what we've done. Students were given the challenge to create or rebuild a house after a hurricane has come through, and so they were given the materials to kind of develop a safe shelter for their family to stay in. Some of their creations. We've also done, I think, a power-up in our classroom, which is during our intervention time, and so the students participate in center rotations, and one of them is a maker space. So one day, they had to create Lego creations using task cards. So this is some of their creations that they did. The next one we did during our science unit on animal habitats, so the students had to use recycled materials to create a habitat that represented where their animal would live and survive in. They also had to create challenges where they had to work as a team, to work on team building skills, and so this one was creating the tallest tower, where they had to use Play-Doh and toothpicks, and then they had to measure the height of their tower. The next one was a bridge building challenge, where they had some recycled materials and again Play-Doh to help connect the pieces, but they had to create a way to safely cross their bridge from one tissue box to the next tissue box. We talked about suspension bridges and different types, so they had a little background before they were ready to build. Then they also got to explain to other groups as they rotated through how their team worked together to build the bridge, so it was a good time for them to learn from each other and share what they had learned through the activity. Just recently, in math, we did geometry, 2D and 3D shapes, so the students had to combine the two and create a geometry town using 3D shapes created out of marshmallows and toothpicks to create their city.
And that is my beautiful town.
Before spring break, they did a kind of a fun snack STEM activity. They had to create a nest that would hold their peep inside of its egg using just jelly beans, pretzel sticks, and a Styrofoam cup, and they had to create a way to keep the egg from falling into the cup. And then they got to eat it afterwards. We have been doing an egg study, so we studied different types of animals that laid eggs, and so we went outside one day, and they had to, they were given an animal that laid an egg, and they had to create a nest that would hold that egg in it using items found outside. So then they had to place the different type of eggs into their, their nests.
That's ours.
And that is all.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Sterns. Nice presentation, boys and girls.
Thanks, Sally.
Do we have any additions or modifications to the agenda?
We do not this evening.
And next up would be recognitions. Dr. Parrish?
Yes, our first recognition actually is gonna be made by Marie Trice from the PCOSN Art League, so if she... As she comes forward, I'd like to ask those representing our schools, so first Janet Harper, the principal of the primary school, will represent her art classroom, if she would come forward. Oh, sorry, Jenny George is here. Jenny George will come forward, please. Barbara Wood from the elementary school will represent her art classroom. And from the middle, we have our art teacher, Paula Freeman, here. From the high school, we have our art teachers, Paula Bennett, Marie Wilton, if they would come forward, please. We'll turn it over to you, Marie.
Okay. Good evening. Pablo Picasso once said, "Every child is an artist." My name is Marie Trice, and we at the PCOSN Art League strongly agree with Picasso and want to give every child the opportunity to express themselves through their artistic abilities. Therefore, we would like to present each of the PCOSN art teachers with a check for seven hundred and fifty dollars. Our hope is that these funds will help the students to express their artistic creativities. And we thank you guys for being such wonderful art teachers. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, guys. We appreciate all the work you did with the students.
As Dr. Carter makes his way to the podium, I just also want to thank you, Ms. Trice and PCOSN Art League chair. You all continue to support our programs, and it really...
Thank you.
Thank you so much for that. Well, we have a number of recognitions this evening, but what we're gonna start with first, because it is that time of year, is we are going to recognize our teachers of the year. Always an exciting evening for us. And first, no surprise, after the presentation that you saw today, our primary school teacher of the year is Ms. Molly Stern. If she would come forward.
Stern currently teaches second grade and is completing her ninth year of teaching, with this being her second year in PCOSN City Schools. She holds a Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education from Radford University. Her goal as a teacher is to not only help students learn, but to engage and inspire them to be creative and to nurture their social, emotional development, encourage them to self-discover, and inspire them to be positive thinkers who are intrinsically motivated. As a student herself, Ms. Stern struggled in school, and from her experiences, she has a understanding for the toolkit of strategies students need to assist them in their journey as lifelong learners. She is a team player and an eager and willing contributor who finds value in forming meaningful relationships and being a colleague who is always willing to assist others. Ms. Stern is a member of the Division's STEM Committee and is serving as the STEM Day Point of Contact for the primary school. Outside of her professional life, Ms. Stern volunteers with help the Hampton Roads Ecumenical Lodging and Provisions, which assists those who are homeless in meeting their daily needs. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Molly Stern on being named as the PCOSN Primary School's Teacher of the Year. Now I would ask that, from the elementary school, Ms. Deborah Steigerwald come forward, She currently teaches third grade, and this is her seventeenth year of teaching, with this being her second year in PCOSN. She earned her undergraduate degree in Gifted Education from Old Dominion University. Ms. Steigerwald believes that being an educator means so much more than simply transmitting knowledge to students. It is about creating a safe and caring community where all children are encouraged to actively learn without apprehension or limitations. Parents once called her an edu-carer because she felt Ms. Steigerwald, sorry, genuinely cared for the well-being of the students while still holding high standards for their learning. She serves as liaison for PES in the Kiwanis Club and has served as a mentor teacher and Girl Scout troop leader. She is honored and humbled to be nominated as Teacher of the Year as she works with many amazing devoted teachers. Please join me in congratulating her on being named PCOSN Elementary School's Teacher of the Year. And now, as we move on to the middle squad, I ask that Ms. Deborah Blackstock come forward, She has fourteen years of teaching experience, with the last nine in PCOSN, where she teaches eighth, teaches sixth grade US history. She believes deeply in building relationships with her students and their families, and success in her classroom means that all students are exposed to hands-on learning and higher level lessons where students are challenged and engaged. Today, she hopes that her students gain a deeper understanding of the content while being exposed to real-world situations that will better prepare them for their future. Mrs. Blackstock received her Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education from Christopher Newport University. She currently serves as the Teacher Advisory Council Representative for PCOSN Middle School, has participated in after-school remediation programs, been a cooperating and mentor teacher, served on the Calendar Committee and Written Curriculum. Outside of her professional life, Mrs. Blackstock served on the PCOSN Public Library Advisory Board, volunteers in the nursery at her church, and with the Upward Basketball Program. Please join me in congratulating her on being named the PCOSN Middle School Teacher of the Year. And our High School Teacher of the Year would be Ms. Irene Winchester. She currently teaches world geography and world history and has ten years of teaching experience, with four of those in PCOSN. Ms. Winchester greets students with a clean slate each day and holds the belief that her students are, at their core, just kids who are finding their way. She believes that the relationships she develops with her students foster a deep trust, which allows her to help them both inside and outside of the classroom. Ultimately, she works hard each day to ensure that her students know she wants the best for them and genuinely cares about their success. Ms. Winchester earned her bachelor's degree from Western Illinois University. She is a project-based learning ambassador, serves on the STEM Committee, and has been a member of the Bully Prevention Committee, as well as the Bring Your Own Device Implementation Committee. Outside of the high school, she is the leader of her daughter's Girl Scout Daisy Troop. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Irene Winchester on being named PCOSN High School's Teacher of the Year. We're next gonna ask if Mr. Charlie French would come forward, please, and he is representing
Thank you. Chairman Carter, members of the school board, Dr. Parrish, and certainly our, our teachers being recognized this evening. I'm Charlie French. I'm, I'm the Kiwanis liaison with the school system, school district, and you may know that the Kiwanis Club of PCOSN is the largest and probably the most active civic organization in, in the city with over a hundred and thirty members. Our continued growth in the city of the Kiwanis Club of PCOSN is most likely because the Kiwanis's primary goal or primary objective is our schools, our students, and improving the world, one child and one community at a time. Both the Kiwanis and teachers have a similar mission, and that's to improve the lives of our children. The Kiwanis focus is on teaching self-confidence, community leadership, and service to others. It's an honor to be here tonight to recognize the dedicated efforts of our four, of four of our outstanding teachers. I'd like to read a letter of recognition that we're presenting to the four, these four educators on behalf of President, Mr. Robert Kukic. Congratulations on your selection as PCOSN Teacher of the Year. PCOSN is blessed to have one of the highest-quality school systems in Virginia due to dedicated efforts of all our teachers. Being recognized as the top teacher in the elite company is truly a testament to your commitment and proficiency in educating our youth. The Kiwanis Club of PCOSN strives to embody the goals of Kiwanis International in positively improving the world, one child and one community at a time. We do this through our charitable work with the PCOSN school system. Your exemplary efforts for the two thousand, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year mirror our own to be of positive influence on our youth and our community. So we therefore are pleased to and honored to present you with a two hundred and fifty dollar check in recognition of your outstanding work. And we will do that. This two thousand, this two hundred and fifty dollar check is for you, for each of you personally...
Thank you so much.
One more, one more quick point that, what I wanted to say is that this two hundred and fifty dollar check is for you to spend as you'd like. It's, it's for your hard work and your accomplishments. It's not intended for you to have to spend on your classroom or your classes. It's for you. So, so that's it. And one more thing, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, didn't remind you that coming up in about two and a half weeks is the, on Saturday, May fifth, will be the Kiwanis's annual pig roast. Down the lawn of Wells Fargo Bank, and which, thanks to our great community support, allows us to give so much back to the schools and the worthy needs of, of PCOSN. Thank you.
We still have some more recognitions. Next, what we'd like to do is recognize our high school volunteer for March of the month, and I'd ask that Mr. Greg Jekowicz come forward, please. Mr. Jekowicz is well-known for his work ethic, positive teamwork attitude, and leadership. He is well-respected throughout the band program and the Procosin community for being the go-to person to get things done. He is a positive, motivated parent and volunteer. Greg first got involved in music playing trumpet in middle and high school growing up in Illinois. Later, he played in the marching Illini Band at the University of Illinois-Champaign-Urbana. After graduating from college, Greg joins the United States Air Force and served from 1986 until his retirement in 2011. It was the Air Force that brought Greg and his wife Janet and daughter Valerie to Procosin in the spring of 2001. Greg began volunteering with the Procosin High School Band when his daughter Valerie joined our color guard program in the fall of 2007. Even after Valerie graduated from PHS in 2011, Greg has continued to volunteer. Over the years, he has helped to write marching drills and arrange music for the band. He has continued to be very supportive to Mr. Spruill, our band director, with help in rehearsals and has guest-conducted on a few of our concerts. After retiring from the Air Force, Greg began working for Booze Allen Hamilton Company. They are a defense contractor that encourages their employees to be active in their local communities, and the company donates dollars for volunteer hours given by the employee to localities. Over the six years Greg has been with Booze Allen and Hamilton, the PH Band has received anywhere from $300 to $700 a year for Greg's dedication to our band program. Please join me in congratulating Greg Jekowicz for being the March Volunteer of the Month. And much like earlier, this won't be a surprise, because we're actually also recognizing the primary school's Volunteer of the Month. I would ask Charlie French to come forward. Charlie French has helped our school division in schools in many ways over the years. Charlie French served on the school board and was elected chairman for the 2003-2004 school year. He also served the schools when he served as a school liaison officer for Langley Air Force Base. Charlie was one of the founding members, members of the Procosin Education Foundation and served on its board until recently. He is also very active in Kiwanis, which also serves our schools in many ways, to include through financial donations, tutoring, and support for student clubs that are affiliated with Kiwanis. In recent years, Charlie French initiated and now manages the Real Men Read Program, which is held at the primary school and elementary school each year. The purpose of the Real Men Read Program is to promote reading for pleasure while also presenting strong male role models supporting education. Charlie French works diligently organizing community support for this program by arranging men from Procosin and local authors to visit Procosin Primary and Procosin Elementary as guest readers. Students at both schools enjoy time spent listening to the guest readers and chatting with them about the importance of reading for pleasure. Procosin Primary and Procosin Elementary schools are appreciative of Charlie French's dedication to this program and look forward to his continued support. Please join me in recognizing Charlie as being Procosin Primary's Volunteer of the Month. Next, we have, we're recognizing our March Student of the Month, if Jessie Chapman would come forward, please. Jessie is a young man who has a true love for his school and community. He has an outstanding work ethic and has proven this through his ability to manage his time between school achievements and community involvements. Jessie has an outstanding resume to include working at Pomoco Nissan, Virginia Living Museum as an exhibit interpreter, and working in garden and yard maintenance. He has volunteers at Keep the Promise Ministry. Jess completed an internship with NASA Mentorship Program. He is a member of the National Honor Society, Principal's Advisory Committee, Spanish Honor Society, PHS Islander Band, and SCA. He is a student-to-student ambassador and the vice president of the Leo Club. Jessie plans to obtain a master's degree in business administration and marketing. His ultimate goal is to own his own business in the fitness market. Please join me in congratulating Jessie Chapman for being Student of the Month. Next, we would like to recognize somebody who was a winner for the Distributed Education Clubs of America in the state competition. So I'd ask that Ashley Jarvis come forward at this time. And now she's coming forward, I believe the club sponsor Lisa Bowden is in the audience. If she could just stand to be recognized, please. Ashley Jarvis won third place overall at DECA States in Hotel and Lodging Management Series and is a national qualifier. She has been at DECA for all four years at PHS. Ashley is a member of the National Honor Society, National Society of High School Scholars, Math Honor Society, and has been on honor roll all four years of high school. She has completed 200-plus hours of community service and will receive the Community Service Seal on her diploma, all this while holding down a job at Wendy's for the past two years. After high school, Ashley will join the United States Air Force looking for a career in intelligence. Please join me congratulating for her winning third place in state. And Ashley, we wish you the best in your national competition, and maybe we'll see you back here again. Next, we'd like to recognize two of our high school students that made the All-State Chorus. First, I'd ask that Olivia Hollowell come forward. Olivia is a sophomore at PHS and is a member of the Evolution Show Choir and drum major for Islander Marching Band. She plays clarinet in the PHS Symphonic Band and is also involved with the drama program. Olivia participates in many musicals outside of school at the Peninsula Community Theater and Virginia Wesleyan University. She also plays soccer and pole vaults. Olivia has made district chorus since seventh grade. After high school, she hopes to attend James Madison University to study music, education, or musical theater. Please join me in congratulating Olivia for being selected to the All-State Chorus. Next, I'd ask that Colin Freeman come forward. Colin is a senior and has been heavily involved in theater and choral activities at PHS. He participated in the 2016 All-State Chorus, 2017 Senior Honors Choir, and recently performed at the 2018 All-State Chorus. Colin would like to thank his parents, teachers, and peers for their incredible support. After graduating, Colin will major in vocal performance. Please join me in congratulating Colin for being a member of the All-State Chorus. And I'm, on their behalf, going to let you know that they are both performing in the Addams Family Musical at the high school, which runs from April 27th to the 29th, and I've been lucky to see a little bit of that show already, and I recommend that you come see it. It's going to be a fantastic show. Next, I'd like to recognize a member of the All-State Band. Would Christy O'Day come forward, please? Christy is a senior at Procosin High School. She's an active member of National Honor Society, where she serves as a chapter's president. She is the vice president of Key Club. Christy is also involved in Spanish club, Mu Alpha Theta, Model United Nations, TRI-M Music Honor Society, and Spanish Honor Society. She is a drum major in the PHS Islander Marching Band, has performed in district band and senior regional orchestra, and All-State Band. Christy plans to major in either chemistry or anthropology at the University of Virginia to pursue a career in healthcare. Please join me in congratulating Christy for making the All-State theme. And I just have to say it, go Whos. Next, we'd like to recognize two of our fourth grade students who won an essay competition. The Charles Parrish Chapter of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution sponsored a flag essay contest. I'm happy to share that Procosin Elementary had two first-place state winners in the fourth grade class, Alyssa Laney and Emma Roberts. They both received the book, "The Flag We Love," along with the PES Library receiving a book. I'd ask first that Alyssa Laney come forward. And Emma, you can come right on up with her, too. Alyssa is a fourth grader in Mrs. Lance's class. Alyssa's favorite subject is Virginia Studies this year. She enjoys learning all about the different people and what their contribution was to the history of Virginia. In her essay about the American flag, it means to her she wrote about what happened during the Civil War and how it made her feel proud of her country. Alyssa plays field hockey, basketball, and baseball. Join me in congratulating Alyssa again for winning in the state competition. Emma Roberts is in Mrs. Standish's fourth grade class. Her favorite subjects are science and Virginia history. In her essay, she wrote about all the people in her family who have served in the military under the United States flag and how proud she is of their service to our country. Emma is a cheerleader and plays volleyball. Again, please join me in congratulating Emma. Well, we're really excited tonight now to announce the Division Teacher of the Year. The selection committee just met yesterday to make this determination. The school-based awards are part of the State Teacher of the Year selection process. Each division selects a Teacher of the Year to move on to the Regional Two competition for State Teacher of the Year. Numerous criteria are used in evaluating the nominees, including the abilities of the teachers in the classroom and in communicating their message to a broad audience. Candidates are considered on the basis of the following criteria: Inspire students of all backgrounds and abilities to learn, has the respect and admiration of students' parents and colleagues, plays an active and useful role in the community as well as in the school, is poised and articulate, and possesses the energy to withstand a taxing schedule. It is my pleasure to announce this evening that this year's Procosin Teacher of the Year is Mrs. Deborah Blackstock from Procosin Middle School.
Next up is Presentations and Reports. And first, Financial Update by Ms. Woodruff.
Good evening, Chairman Carter, members of the school board, and Dr. Parrish. For the finance report this evening, I wanted to give you a quick update on the budget process. The General Assembly opened their special session last week on April 11th. As of today, we still do not have an approved state budget. We are hoping that a budget will be approved by the end of the month, but it could go into May or June. We just have to wait and see. We will continue to monitor the progress of the General Assembly, and should we need to bring a revised budget to you, we will do that as soon as information becomes available. The city manager did release the city's proposed budget last week with a plan for city council to adopt the budget on May 14th. The city's budget includes the school's budget as presented, and for those interested, the proposed budgets for the school division and the city can be found in the Procosin Public Library or on ETR. Library or on each respective website. I also wanted to mention that in January this year, we issued an RFP for health and dental plans and did receive very favorable responses. As a result of this RFP, you will be voting on these later this evening. As was discussed during the work session last month, Anthem was selected to remain as our health insurance provider. There will be a change in the dental insurance provider to Anthem Dental, and the decision for these health and dental plans were made as a result of input from our benefits consultant, benefits committee, as well as an employee survey. We will be working closely with our third-party administrator in the next few weeks on this change, as well as upcoming open enrollment process. And that includes my report.
And next up is Operations Budget with Mr. Pappas.
Good evening, School Board, Chairman Carter, Dr. Parrish. Over the break, the maintenance team worked diligently at the primary school on various projects that are best accomplished when no students are underfoot. At the primary school specifically, the last two rooftop units, HVAC units, Heating and Air Conditioning Units, were flown up on the roof, connected to their respective spaces, and then connected to the control system, which was part of the CIP. Once that was done, we worked with numerous vendors from many disciplines to perform the actual commissioning, to make sure every room responded the way it was supposed to, every device in every room responded at Q, and that was accomplished. We're very thrilled. There are just a few minor punch list items that have to be done, but we are definitely in the closeout phase of that project. The 5th graders at the Procoston Elementary School are taking part in a pilot program for breakfast in the classroom. As we've discussed, breakfast in the classroom offers very many benefits to students, and what we have seen is nothing short of exciting because students are getting to class quicker. The participation in breakfast has doubled, and we're seeing that there's no lag time anymore between students who go to the cafeteria and then enter into the classroom. Teachers have responded that it's happened without event. They barely know what's going on. We are very pleased at this point, albeit we've only been in it a week and two days. Custodial services will be made a little bit easier because PCPS sought and received a grant for safety equipment, and our insurance provider has given us funds to procure biohazard spill kits, which can be placed readily accessible, whether it's in the cafeteria, or in a foyer, or in a gym, where sometimes these things happen and we need to do a quick cleanup and you can never find the custodian who's somewhere else. So this makes it readily available and easy to use for anybody. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas. And next is Instructional Update with Dr. Fox.
Good evening Chairman Carter, Vice Chair Whitaker, members of the Board, and Dr. Parrish. My update this evening focuses on the important connection we share with the military community in our area. From deployments to new schools, military children are faced with unique challenges that ordinary youth their age never experience. Their ability to adapt to present and future challenges deserves our respect and our admiration. In an effort to recognize the hard work and applaud the courage of our military children, the Department of Defense has deemed April as the month of the military child. Currently, 29% of our students are associated with the military, and we serve students who are connected with all five branches of the military. We work closely with our military liaisons to ensure smooth transitions for our students and to enhance their educational opportunities. One of the activities that our schools will be participating in this month is called Purple Up. Students, faculty, staff wear their purple attire to show their support and say thank you to all of our active and retired military service members and their families. Why purple? The National Military Family Association shares that purple symbolizes all of the branches of the military and includes all of their colors: the Coast Guard blue, Army green, Navy blue, Marine red, and Air Force blue. PCPS benefits greatly from the presence of these resilient, determined students and their families who persevere sometimes in the face of great stress. Our military-connected status has also led to our eligibility for competitive grants with the Department of Defense Educational Activity, known as DODIA. We have provided updates for you throughout the year on the progress of our two grants: the STEM for All Grant, which helps to infuse more science, engineering, technology, and mathematics into our classrooms, and the Project-Based Learning Grant, which provides real-world learning experiences for our students. So to all of our active and retired military service members and their families, we say thank you and we are grateful for your service and your sacrifice. This concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you.
Very much, Dr. Fox. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir.
Ms. Whitaker, could you please take us through the Consent Agenda?
Absolutely. There are four items on tonight's consent agenda: financial reports, approval of personnel action, authorization to change appropriation and to accept and accept attached request, and approval of March's regular session and public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote?
Mr. Hocken?
Aye.
Ms. Mossler?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
And other matters for consideration. First, consideration of Special Education Plan for the school year 2018.
Yes, each year we bring this forward to you at this time, and this lays out what we'll do in terms of serving our students. And this also, by approving this plan, enables us to access the government through the state government to us. So with that said, I recommend approval of Special Education Annual Plan and Report as presented this evening.
I have a motion to approve the Special Education Plan. So moved. Second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote, please?
Mr. Hocken?
Aye.
Ms. Mossler?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Ms. Jordan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Whitaker?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
And consideration of approval of the Perkins Grant for 2018.
Yes, again, we bring this forward to you each year about this time, and this grant provides some funding to support our career and technical education programs to us. So you have here presented a grant, so I'd recommend approval of that. And for the community who can't see, it's for just under $10,000.
All right. Do I have a motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there about Perkins? For one, appreciate the $16,000 grant. It's very important, and many in the community benefit from that. All right. Ms. Reimers, could you call for a vote?
Mr. Hocken?
Aye.
Ms. Mossler?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Whitaker?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Consideration of Approval of Employee Health and Dental Benefits.
Yes, as Ms. Woodruff spoke to you earlier about what we are asking for you to approve those plans, I did present the cost and what it would mean for us in terms of the budget, but here's requesting your approval for us to move forward. Anthem Plan for Health Insurance, as we've done, but now switch to this whole program as well.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve? Second. Any questions there, comments?
I do have one question. Do we go out?
We try and go out to bed usually every three to four years. Well, they can, no, they can, every year, your insurance went down, so it'll still fluctuate, but for this coming school year, it did enable us to decrease our costs.
Aye.
Ms. Mossler?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Whitaker?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. I have several proclamations for consideration of approval. Child Month, Public School Volunteer Week, Teacher Appreciation Weeks, First Day. For Military Child Month, follow up with Dr. Fox's comments. Special Month to recognize and pay tribute to military families and their children's sacrifices made and for the commitment, courage, and unconditionally part of our armed forces. And just a note here, Virginia has the highest number of active-duty, school-aged children in the nation and is committed to be an active participant in that educational opportunity for military children. Public School Volunteer Week, parent and community involvement, significant factor in success for schools, and by becoming a volunteer, parents and community members are providing an invaluable contribution to the education of our students, and we see that monthly. We are very, very fortunate in this community to have just an outpouring of parents willing to pitch in and help out. Teacher Appreciation Week, we honor the dedicated men and women who lend their passion and skills to educating our children because we believe teaching is one of the valuable professions in the country. Each and every student is essential to student's success, and their efforts result in greater confidence in the school system. School Nutrition Employee Appreciation Month, behalf of Procoston City Public Schools' Mills Nutrition Department, providing healthful, nutritious meals to the school division. We have a hard-working staff who prepare and serve school meals through their daily interaction and support. School Nurse Appreciation Day, school nurses and professional nurses that advance the well-being, academics, success, and lifelong achievements of students by providing a critical safety net for our nation's most fragile children. School nurses act as a liaison to the school community, parents, and providers on behalf of children's health. At, do I have a motion to approve proclamations? So moved. And a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments there? Yes, ma'am.
I just have an observation. I completely understand why the military children get a month. Seems like everybody else gets a week, but nurses get a day. So I just have to point that out as the nurse here.
Not even noticed that.
I didn't recognize that. Sorry.
That is not fair.
No.
Yeah. Good point.
Wow.
Point.
Well, I say we appreciate all of them the whole year. That's my point.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
I totally missed that. Nice attention to detail.
Dr. Fox, was there a designated day for that purple attire day, or is it just a month long?
It was last Friday.
Last Friday.
It fluctuates between the second and the third Friday, but it was officially...
All right. Ms. Reimers, could you please call for a vote?
Mr. Hocken?
Aye.
Ms. Mossler?
Aye.
Ms. Hassel?
Aye.
Ms. Sheeler?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Vice Chair Whitaker?
Aye.
Chairman Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Decisions of the matters, Dr. Parrish?
Yes, just to tag on to what Ms. Woodruff did in terms of the budget update, as she said, the city manager did put out his proposed budget, which now city council is considering. As part of that, he did include funding to support the capital improvement for the schools, the major renovation to the middle school, as well as the roof renovations for the high school, primary school, and buses. So that is included in his budget proposal and is now under consideration by city council. Additionally, last night, I attended the planning commission meeting that was held here, and they did approve last night the CIP as presented by the city, which again includes our projects, as we've been talking about them for the last number of weeks and months, actually. So now that will also move forward to city council, their consideration. So I just wanted to let you know that not only is the operating budget we've moved forward, but also in terms of the CIP, and then the potential to funding for the debt service. And just as a reminder, again, with the middle school renovation, looking at having about $17 million to do that renovation with using another $3 million for the other projects. So we're certainly very appreciative of that support from the city, and I'll keep you advised of that. And you do have your joint meeting with the city next Monday, April 23rd, to talk about budget, and as part of that, certainly can talk about the CIP as well, so that will be the focus of that joint meeting. Also, I just wanted to mention, I think you saw a great example of it tonight with our second graders for STEM presentation, but we had in March, right after your last board meeting, our first instructional showcase, where we had teachers and students showing off a lot of the innovative instruction that we have going on in our schools, and we brought all the way from primary school through the high school into the high school, and had many examples of that, and it was very successful. And it was just a great evening to be able to actually see some of the things going on in the classrooms, and have the students there actually explaining what they did, much like what you saw here with our second graders. And it really allowed folks to see what we're doing with the grants that we did receive through the Department of Defense Education Activities Fund, both the STEM and the project-based learning. So I just wanted to highlight that, and we are likely going to make that an annual event as well. But while we talk about budget and CIP so often in board meetings, there's just some incredible instruction going on, and you just see small pieces of it here in your meeting. And with that, I will turn it over to the next.
Kindergartners enjoyed a walking field trip to the Pecoson Police Department, where they met officers to tour the department and learn about their jobs. First graders had an exciting trip to Portsmouth Children's Museum. They traveled to the Children's Museum enforments to wrap up several units of study. First graders were also very busy this month, performing their salute to America program. They sang and performed with musical instruments, patriotic favorites such as God Bless America and This Land Is Your Land. All grade levels have been working diligently on writing both creative and handwriting. Second graders continue to learn cursive, a big milestone in their lives. They've been learning about the steps to complete a research paper. Each student has researched an animal, cited sources, and completed diagrams, and are now putting their finishing touches on the research papers. Second graders also plan a trip to Jamestown next month to accumulate their Native American and colonial unit. They're very eager to get on the bus and see life as it was in the past. Finally, all kindergarten through second grade students had an opportunity to enter the Pecoson Friends of Library 2018 contest. As a part of the regular writing instruction, students learned how to write an essay on a given prompt. This year's prompt was "In My Dream I Imagined." Pecoson Primary School had an amazing response, first, second, and third, and honorable mention winners in both kindergarten and first and second grade categories. In late March, the Pecoson Elementary School fifth graders delivered a show-stopping musical highlighting music by The Beatles, led by the music teacher, Miss Herity. The Battles of the Books Team placed second in the regional competition. Today, students enjoyed fun and exciting musical assembly that reiterated the test-taking strategies. As spring comes into full swing, classes, all are working in the outdoor classroom and learning about how to garden. It's time to get the milkweed growing to feed the caterpillars in the fall, which will become monarch butterflies. Third graders went to the Norfolk Mechanical Gardens, fifth graders are going to the zoo, and the Ecology Club is planning a kayaking field trip. On April 26th, all grades will participate in a full day of STEM activities. On April 19th, Pecoson Middle School will celebrate Poem in Your Pocket Day as a part of National Library Month. Students are invited to write a poem or bring their favorite poem to carry around in their pocket on this day. Also, poems will be available in first-period classes that morning. Poem in Your Pocket prizes will be given out to each class period throughout today. In recognition of National Library Month, PMS will host a nationally-known poet, Alan Wolfe, on April 24th and 25th. Mr. Wolfe is an author, poet, performer, and educator who can recite hundreds of poems from memory. Several students are being recognized at PMS for academic excellence this week. 237 students earned honor roll recognition for the third quarter, and 32 students are being inducted into National Junior Honor Society this Thursday. Pecoson Middle School students raised $477 for Leukemia Lymphoma Society through Penny's for Patients campaign. Our Take a Stand, Lend a Hand bullying prevention program will focus on caring for the fourth quarter. The final quarter of the year means that Pecoson High School is charging full speed ahead. Students continue to engage in meaningful learning experience across the curriculum. For example, algebra functions and data analysis students explored the meaning behind probability by calculating the probability of various occurrences, such as the probability of a student wearing a gray sweatshirt throughout the school community. Students in Spanish classes work together to plan travel experience in the target language countries, while chemistry students learn to develop their own crystals with common household cleaners. The talents of our Islanders were honored in many ways this past month, with the Odyssey of Our Mind team taking first place in this week's past state competition in qualifying for the world competition. Additionally, PHS students have been recognized by NASA for their inventions as a part of the HUNCH program, with two students traveling to the Johnson Space Center at the end of the month to receive feedback on their designs. These students were selected from students from over 600 schools. Our Islander Chorus received an excellent rating for their performance and a superior rating for their singing at their state assessment, while our Islander Band received a superior rating and was named for Junior Honor Band for the ninth consecutive time. Additionally, five students were recognized in the high school category of Friends of Pecoson Library Essay Contest. With Isabel Neal taking top prize, we encourage our community to see our Islanders in action in their spring sports, in our spring band and chorus concerts, as well as our spring musical, The Addams Family. Be sure to check our website for all dates and latest accomplishments of all students within our community.
Thank you, sir. Nice job. Well done. Mr. Holcomb? Holcomb, with it, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Nellin?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As always, I'm extremely proud of our students, and I enjoy the student presentations, that's my favorite part of the school. I want to congratulate all the individuals who were recognized tonight, also thank our military families for their service, and ask that the community do wear purple this month to continue to show our support. And last, I'd just like to say congratulations and special thanks to the PCPS Teachers of the Year, Ms. Blackstock's Award for Teacher of the Year is well-deserved, and they are what make this division so great, and keep up the good work.
I really cannot add anything else on that.
Ms. Sheeler?
I would like to just talk about parent volunteers. They make an invaluable contribution to the education of our students, their time, their talents, and also sometimes their financial contributions, as we heard from Greg Jekowitz with his company, Booze Allen Hamilton Company, providing donations to the school over the years. I talked to him years ago when he started to go for that. I was excited to be able to do that. Our parent volunteers are, fill so many different roles, they're chaperones, they're mentors, they're after-school tutors, they're club leaders, they're booster club members, PTO members, guest speakers, classroom helpers, and I can think of individuals all through the years that have filled all of those roles, and that's really special, both for the school and for the parents. And it's so special for some parents that their children, like Valerie Jekowitz, will graduate in 2011, and here's Greg, all these years later, completely involved in the school system. I know he gives just about every Tuesday night to the school, he goes to, on the band trips, he's been doing that for all the years. Tomorrow, they leave for Atlanta, actually maybe in the middle of the night tonight, as that goes sometimes. He is a perfect example of a parent volunteer, an indispensable part of what he has committed to. And it's just, it's very exciting that we can reward that kind of.
I just wanted to encourage all of our students, especially those seniors who have come back from spring break, not to fall into the senior-itis trap, as we are just a couple of months away from graduation. So I wish all of our students and our staff the best of these last couple of months. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Whitaker? I do not have. Anne, if you want me to.
I know. I'd just like to offer my thanks to city council for the continued support with operations and improvements, and I thank all of you for your work, and congratulations to the Teachers of the Year, and for our military families and for the sacrifices you make. At, we will move into any material for board?
None this evening.
Then we will adjourn for our work session.